All right. I will call the meeting's order. Stand for the pledge. Roll call. It's here, David here, Jeff here, Perk's here, Erica here, Jeff's here. Everybody is present except for. Was the meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was, and as a reminder, it's being recorded.
All right. Uh, welcome to our visitors. Is anybody signed up for public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next. Our highlight on youth. Our first highlight is our middle school forensics presentation. Uh, middle school forensic coach, uh, Andy Langman and students Shelby Albright, Ella Walz and Nate Heim. Did I get that right? All right.
We are fortunate to have a strong middle school forensic program. This year we had eighteen students uh, who are part of our program, which makes us actually one of the largest middle school programs in the area. They all did extremely well at all three tournaments through which we hosted this year. Uh, it's not a rotation. We opt to do it so that way there's more opportunities for students to participate and compete. Otherwise, they wouldn't have those chances. And so tonight, we have two performances for you. Our first one is a reader's theater, and this category requires an interpretation of literature with vocal variety, movement, facial expressions, gestures, but they are not allowed to make direct contact with one another. So our first ones are if you're there's Ella Walz and Shelby Albright.
You can just let us know which. Just introduce yourselves.
I'm Shelby.
I'm Ella. It happens to everyone. Those everyday things that don't seem overly traumatic or intense, but to some, they constitute life's
most embarrassing moments. For something that's only a fleeting second, we endure them forever after.
When you think about it, you look happily ever after.
And goalie locks wasn't ever heard from again after unforgettable unforgettable and most embarrassing, excuse me, encounter with the Bears.
Now, why doesn't that ever happen in real life? Because in real life, only good. Because in fairy tales, only good things happen, or they're quickly, or we are quickly put aside, forgotten. In real life, it's all this power, prestige, and that they become our tickets to a better life.
Right. Blackmail. Today, we're going to share embarrassing moments, A Teen's Guide to Horror by R. M. Joseph.
We have not according to the mark of unembarrassing, but we have tales to tell which will truly tantalize.
Wait a minute, who said that word?
As I was saying, we have not according to the mark of unembarrassing it, but we have tales to tell which will truly tantalize any of you by the fact embarrassed by the same criticism.
My embarrassing moments began at birth.
Funny, so did mine.
It was at this time when everyone decided that video footage of live births could rival those disgusting films Mom would have viewed in the class. Can you believe that two people who are so excited to have a baby could mar the moment with amateur films of blood and gore?
Hey, did you have some psycho in the background screaming, give me drugs, give me drugs?
Yeah, sounded awfully close to the camera.
Intense.
Mail.
Who could have been?
Oh, Dad, really?
It wasn't enough that that had to have female footage, I also did stills, yes, in the flesh.
They decided to break them out every time a new friend comes over.
Oh, I remember it. She might have been X-rated.
Yeah, on account of her nudity, it's so embarrassing. We grew and so did the size of our, size of our embarrassments.
I was three the first time Mom took me to a grocery store. I have two older siblings. Mom wasn't gonna take any chances with them training me for the great checkout line standoff.
It's a toss-up. Who gets more embarrassed?
If you don't put that down.
Mom, make her quit.
Don't make me give you a spanking.
Mom, spanking's never worked. Look what happened to me.
I've never lived on my first day of kindergarten.
Oh, your mom was so funny. So you had the bus stop with you?
Yeah, I was okay with going to school until I saw your mom bawling her eyes out. It's really hard to be cool when the only adult can't control herself.
It wouldn't have been so bad, but when she got on the bus and made sure I found a seat with a responsible person, I could have died.
You did pretty well. The bus driver didn't make you get out from under the seat until after your mom left.
Who dressed you for school when you first started?
What are you talking about?
Who picked out your clothes?
My mom.
And when did she quit?
When I threw a temperature change room in the shore and refused ripping ever again.
Does that really work? I've got to try that.
Don't tell me your mom still can't be helping you pick out your clothes. Anyway, last week, I went from dress shopping.
Oh, fun.
With my mom.
Oh.
Found an absolutely awesome dress.
Color?
Red.
Style?
Definitely a statement.
And?
I was fine until my mom asked what kind of shawl I was going to wear.
What's a shawl?
You should have, you should have seen the look on the salesperson. I could have driven a major vehicle into the open.
Mom should be seen and not heard.
Right.
I have one to chop that problem. Did you see the new shirt I just purchased?
The one with the fabulous neckline?
Yes. My mom asked what type of slacks I plan to wear with my blouse. Where does she get her terminology?
Must be something that happened in a different department.
Are you kidding me? Sounds like a Walmart word.
At least your mom doesn't try and dress you like one of the group.
I could just die when I see a mom who thinks this stuff thing to do to share her teen's clothes.
Hey, could I borrow your crease sweater set?
Uh, that's my mom's.
Remember the time we all went skiing?
All I remember is Andrea hitting patch of ice and rolling down the hill.
Luckily, the ski patrol man was a soft landing pad.
It was pretty hot, too.
She should embarrass herself more often.
Did you see, did you see Gina's parents at the game last night?
Hmm, what were they thinking?
I know what you mean. They must be at least forty, and they're still holding hands.
In public.
I'm sorry. That should be outlawed to people over the age of thirty-five.
She just wanted to die.
Wouldn't you? She couldn't even concentrate on the game.
Is that why she made the basket for the wrong team?
Do you know what her mom did after the game?
What?
I spotted her mom's hands on her dad's.
I know. I would have packed up and changed my digits. Speaking of creepy mothers, the other night I asked my mom if I could go to a movie with some friends, and my mom remarked, "Well, honey, I'm not too keen on that idea."
At least your mom doesn't think you go gallivanting around after dark.
I don't let my mom talk in public.
Why's that?
She is forever opening her mouth and using a word that had a totally different meaning in another decade. Example. Last night, I brought Steve home because my parents had this absolutely stone age idea that they have to meet the boys that I have sex.
I know the feeling. Do they have any clue how embarrassing it is for the boy to be paraded into the house, only to have your dad continue to read the paper?
Yeah, and it wouldn't be so bad if he's reading the funny section and he isn't even laughing.
Would you rather he be reading the recipes?
What's wrong with that? My dad does.
Oh.
Anyway, dad asks you usual twenty questions. What's your last name?
Johnson.
What does your dad do?
I don't have one.
Yep.
That's embarrassing.
Where do you live?
As if my father could ever find the way.
Well, when my father got to the personal questions, like, have you ever been in trouble with the law?
It is devastating.
Oh, you should have been there. Steve said, "Yeah, I just got back from boot camp. I almost had to do hard time for gang violence and arson." You should have seen my dad. His face turned purple. I'm thinking of it. I was holding my breath, waiting for the, uh, waiting for the explosion. He couldn't even breathe.
And?
Steve started laughing. He just transferred to our school because his father retired from the military. He's a poor colonel.
Did your dad ever calm down?
I'm not sure if he was mad because of the joke or because Steve was so fluky about it, or if he thought Steve was serious.
Flip. There you go, using those weird words again. You know, you can't ever be sure with parents. They're so unpredictable.
Nonetheless, he got even. He said, "Because I was daddy's little girl, I had to be home by nine o'clock and no fondle me on a horseback."
That's fondling.
So, we decided to go to a movie.
Good plan.
When we got to the theater, I looked at all the movies available. They were Stuart Little, Scream Three, or Shrek. So we decided to go to Scream, and the lady asked for ID because it was R-rated. I could not believe it.
What did you do?
Said I left it in the car.
What did Steve say?
Let's go get it.
But.
Exactly. I could have died on the spot. No ID, no alibi, no way out.
What'd you do?
Realized that life was full of embarrassing moments, and I would either have to survive or live a very.
Very.
Very short span.
There has to be a way to get out of these situations.
What's the answer?
We've researched this burning question far and wide, and sadly, no one has the answer. Embarrassing moments are just another fact of teenage life we all go through.
Second presentation is a moments in history. So in forensics, there's performance of literature, and then there is public speaking. So two different kind of categories that things fall into. And this one required the student to research a historical era and put all that research into a speech. So this is a Twitter Nate Heim with his moments in history.
The exciting crowd is chanting, "USA, USA, USA." It's the fifteen twenty-two Olympics. Today is Friday, February twenty-second, nineteen eighty. The nineteen eighty venue is Lake Plaza, New York. It is home of the one of the most dramatic upsets in Olympic history. More than five thousand fans were hoping that their national team would undergo, but many people had doubts about the seven seeded hockey team. Team USA, which means only college players. Many of the other teams all had professional hockey players. But the US team was set to play the finest in the world, the Soviets. This game will be considered the greatest sporting event of all time. Before we get to the exciting events of February twenty-second, let's look to the process to get to Lake Plaza. USA's first step is to hiring a coach, and team I heard books, the University of Minnesota men's hockey coach. Her books had a bad reputation because he was mean to the players, but he wanted the players to grow together like a family. The next process is to find talent. More than one hundred hockey players tried out, and twenty of them made it on final roster for those two games. Most of the players on the US hockey team were from Minnesota. The next part is to find a captain for the team. And Brooks picked Mike Arizona, a left wing from Winston, Massachusetts. Let's talk about the goal to the gold. Team USA played the Soviet Union in a preseason game and lost ten to two. Good thing that didn't matter for the record though. Uh, the first game in the Olympics was the nail-biter for both teams, USA versus Sweden. The game ended up a tie, two to two, final. The next game was Chessen Slovakia, and Team USA pulled out the victory, seven to three. Jim Craig, a Team USA goalie, was electric. He only put up three goals against Chessen Slovakia. One way versus USA, the puck drop back report, the game won, and USA got the blowout victory, five to one, final. And again, Jim Craig was electric. USA got another blow run against Romania, seventy-two was the final score. Team USA was getting some more fans from that win. Next up, West Germany. West Germany came there to play against Team USA, and Team USA came up with the victory, four to two, final. Team USA made it onto the final four, but they will have to play a team which is the best in the world, the Soviet Union, before they can compete for the gold. And we had high hopes for the seven seeded US hockey team. By now, it's late Friday afternoon, five PM to be sacked. The Americans and the Soviet street team met at a sold-out crowd at Lake Plaza. The Soviets fought through first, but we let less Soviet attack in US the period, the rest with the two to one lead. Few seconds left in the first period, American Dave pushed a shot up down the ice, Earl Johnson got the puck and sent it into the Soviet hole. With one second remaining, and now the game is tied. In the second period, the Soviets turned up the attack and took a three to two lead with the two minutes of the period. However, Jim Craig made several remarkable saves. Without Craig, the lead would be definitely larger. And now the third period, Johnson took a wild shot at the Soviet penalty, and the game is tied three to three. But a minute later, Mike Arizona slammed the puck with a twenty-five foot wrist shot. For the first time in the game, the Americans had the lead. The crowd was excited. There was still ten minutes to come. The Americans held on. Craig made more fabulous saves, but five seconds left, the Americans got the puck. Over the sun and the horns sound, Team USA captain Mike Arizona toward the game-winning goal. The Americans have won. The team poured on the ice in total celebration. This game has been hailed a miracle, a miracle on ice. The US team went on to play Finland two days later, where they won the gold medal. The nineteen eighty US hockey team was probably the best-conditioned American hockey team of all time. This miracle on ice was not more than an Olympic upset to the Americans, was a victory in the Cold War, and is just as meaningful as the Berlin Air, but the Apollo moon landing. Also during that time, President Jimmy Carter just announced that the US is going to boycott the nineteen eighty summer games because of the Soviet invasion of Afghanistan. Americans were faced with the Iran hostage crisis, and we needed something to celebrate. This victory was later made into a movie-type vehicle, so the curtain was sold in two thousand and four. This game has been, yeah, well, as a miracle on ice, history.com was my source.
Some of these, um, performances receive the highest awards available at the middle level, and we are very appreciative that you allow them to present tonight. We're very proud of all of their hard work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Very nicely done.
You guys should know, those two girls just said ten thousand more words than they've ever said in the last ten years. Two shyest girls. You can't believe it.
All right, the next item on our, our agenda is the FBLA overview of Tracy Crowley and some FBLA members.
I apologize if I'm a little nervous, which is weird to me because I'm not usually short on words. If you ask my administrators or any of your kids that I'm with, I go on and on. So if I start to ramble, just ring a bell. I'll say your class is over. Or to help with my nerves, if some of you want to pick up your cell phones and start texting your friends, playing games on your computers, I'm a really calm example. So, just kidding, we have great kids, um.
Think you got hit by caffeine or, yeah, this happens all the time.
I think the technology. My name is Tracy Crowley, and I'm the head FBLA advisor. FBLA stands for Future Business Leaders of America. Besides myself, we do have Sammy Gibson, who is our high school and middle school, um, business ed teacher with me. She is kind of, um, my counterpart in a lot of this. She's on maternity leave, so she wasn't able to join me tonight. We're gonna let her enjoy another week or two, um, while she's off. So I just wanted to kind of share, we have, um, here's a group. Our theme this year for FBLA was Success Starts Here, um, that's designated by our national office, and this is our thirteen active members that we currently have in FBLA. Um, this year, some of the things we did is we did attend the National Central Region Leadership Conference in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Um, we had seven members attend that overall across the United States. There was over fifteen hundred students that attended that. Some of the things that our group got to do is we got to do the advisor, uh, forum tour. And the Milwaukee Bucks game, I'm not an NBA fan, so for me, it was, um, ninety minutes of interesting, just watching the students on reaction. For some of them, it was the first time they got to see that, so I was excited. Um, for them, I've never realized how many, like, we got to go to every, you know, box seat that we could do, and we got to see all of the bars and all of the cool things that are there, and as an FBLA advisor, I could just take my hand and say, "Boy, I'd love to come back someday without the students." Um, but it was just interesting to see, um, how much money they generate, and the kids really learned a lot. Another opportunity there is business world came in, and they divided the students up into different groups, and they got to work with people from all over the United States and form little mini businesses and then had to do a business pitch. And, um, we actually attended, uh, I think there's four or five different leadership workshops that the students got to attend. Um, we also attended the UW Stout Leadership Conference. We had four members attend that. That included a campus tour and again, different leadership workshops. Um, here's some of our pictures so you can see us, um, bright and early in the morning for our tours. Here's Emma Wick. Emma Wick is our Region One VP. For FBLA, we have twenty-eight school districts in our region, and she was in charge of all of them. As part of that, she got to speak at, um, in Milwaukee, so she actually presented to all fifteen hundred students. So if I could handle this, I was so proud of her to see her up there. Here she is. She had to, uh, lead one on goal side. So she had to write the entire workshop and present it in front of fifteen hundred different kids at different times. So super proud of her, um, for that stepping up, taking that challenge, because that's not something every high school senior. When they, when they sign up to do this, I kind of leave that out, and then as they get in, I'm like, oh, by the way, here's this great opportunity to work on your public speeches. And so, uh, she was amazing. Um, here's a little, just a snippet of some of our students and, uh, what they put together in the business world. Um, I know the first one was a golf ball. It was a GPS golf ball to help them find their golf balls. Um, Tux was an app that they use, kind of like a butler app. And then Derek Weber, the one on the right, they actually did kind of, if you think of the little robo vacuums, they actually came up with the idea of that for a snow blower. So, um, some of the ideas that they presented at this conference, working with different students. So again, Emma Wick was our Region One Vice President, twenty schools in our region. Uh, we, we hosted as part of that, we had to host our FBLA regional conference. Um, and so we had twenty different schools attend, four hundred and fifty students that attended at the high school that actually competed. Um, at that, we had, we started off with an opening speaker. Um, Mr. Jordines was fortunate to step up and be our keynote. Um, and he did, um, a little one on following your passion and just leadership within. Um, and we had different workshops from, we had UW Stout there. Um, we had Jessica Klatch from the Incorporated or Industries. Um, she actually did, um, a personality trait with students to identify what their passion was and identifying what types of careers. She does do training for different corporations and schools to find out what your personality is, what are your strengths, and what you, you can bring. Um, Mr. Jordines also did one, um, another one on leadership, and then we did a community service one where we actually made blankets for Project Linus. So we had different students cut out and make tie blankets that were donated to students in, or not students, but kids in different hospitals and cancer units and other things. And we made over a hundred blankets for that organization, so I was super excited for that. When we came to the competitions, um, students have to place first to third in their category to advance to the state leadership conference, which is taking place in Madison on March twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. We had twelve students compete from SEC. Nine actually qualified for state. However, because it's over our spring break and we do have a band and choir trip, um, five are actually going to be competing for us, um, in that, in that. Um, depending on how they do in Madison, they have to place in the top four in their category, and then they would advance to our nationals. Our nationals is the last week in June, and this year is in Chicago. So here's our, um, state qualifiers. We had Derek Weber and Ben placed in video production. Ella Fern, uh, placed in business ethics. Claire Palmier placed in personal finance. Wyatt Turberville, uh, competed and placed in spreadsheet applications. Ella Van Rossum and Abigail Lammers placed in broadcast journalism. Anna Van Rossum was public service announcement, and Emma Wick placed in business communications. And I'm just gonna share with you, um, this was Derek Weber's and Ben's video. Um, this was, they had to create a how-to video.
Hey, guys, today we'll be making a delicious bacon cheeseburger. First, take a leaf of lettuce and trim it down to a burger size. Then take an onion, cut off the buds and make thin slices. Next, take a tomato, cut off the stem, and make more thins or good cuts. Set that to the side and grab a baking sheet, line it with parchment paper, and add our two strips of bacon. Put it in the oven at three fifty for eight minutes. Then take it out, flip the bacon, and put it in for another eight minutes. Wow, look at that sizzle. Make sure to put the bacon on some paper towels to drain the grease and crisp up the bacon even more. Next, we'll make the sauce. Add a half cup of mayo, half cup ketchup, a quarter cup of mustard, a pinch of salt, a teaspoon of garlic powder, and a few dashes of Tabasco sauce. Whisk it all up and set that to the side so we can shape our patty. Lay another piece of parchment paper down, throw your quarter pound mold hamburger on the paper. Make sure to shape it nice and thin so it maintains a good shape while cooking. Remember, kids, always wash your hands after dealing with raw meat. Cover with salt and pepper and a little bit of garlic powder, rub it all in. You can set this aside and heat up the griddle to three fifty. While it's heating, cut the sesame seed bun in half. Add some butter to the griddle and toast the buns till it's a nice golden brown. Perfect. Butter up the griddle again, throw it on the patty, season side down, add a little bit more salt. Cook for two minutes, both sides. After the final flip, we'll add two slices of American cheese. Time to construct the burger. Add the sauce to the bottom bun, then the lettuce, tomato, and onion. Place the burger and bacon on top to maximize the flavor of the meats, then top it off with a bun. Doesn't it look delicious? Time to give it a try. Enjoy this perfect bacon cheeseburger.
And we owe a little credit to, uh, Ms. Hawkins, obviously her family consumer for helping the voice, uh, how to construct the perfect burger, and Ms. Gibson for helping with some of the Panther productions to make this all a reality. Um, one of the things that's hard as an advisor is we can't help, and that's really a different concept on an FBLA that has to all be student-driven. So once we provide the initial instruction, they're on their own and they have to put it all together with themselves, so. I'm proud of what comes out because again, it's not having this probably home on constantly to get it done, so.
Hey, guys, today we'll be making a delicious.
I'm gonna get rid of that one. And just the last thing, we are super fortunate. We did such a great job hosting last year, and Emma did such a great job. Uh, Claire Palmier decided to run, and she was elected at our regionals. So she will be sworn in in Madison as our next Region One Vice President. Unfortunately, she'll be on the band and choir trip, so we're gonna see if we can somehow do it virtually, um, but we will be fortunate to host regionals next year. So if any of you want to get a taste of what we do, we are always looking for judges for that. Um, that is my plug, and we'll actually be able to host at the middle school next year because wrestling, um, has their regionals on the same day. So super excited for where we're going, what we're doing, and like I said, we just have a great group of students here at SEC, and I'm so proud of all of them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? All right.
Next item comes under comments by board members and superintendent. So first is general updates and questions to start.
I don't have any, all right, general updates, any questions? Anybody? Anybody else have comments for us? All right, then we'll move on to the next, which is introduction of our twenty twenty-two spring election school board candidates. Um, so we'll just start at the top. Lance? Just tell us who we are and a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, um, thank you.
And also, that podium's adjustable. There's a electric up by your right hand. Just it up and down. Pretty fancy.
Really make this awkward. Um, but I, I'm going to throw in, Sid, I'm relatively new to the St. Curry School District. Uh, my family and I moved in last July. Uh, my wife Kelly, three kids, Molly's in fourth grade, Shay's in first grade, and Griffin's in preschool. Um, was part of the, the referendum committee, uh, to kind of take a look at everything. Through a few other conversations, it kind of sparked some interest, um, kind of a firm believer in, in getting involved in the community. Um, I feel like it's an important part that everybody should participate in. Um, just kind of led me to, to make a decision to, to run for school board and, and do my fair share of trying to get involved. Um, just, I guess, some history on professional experience and why I think it may be a good candidate. Uh, I've held various leadership roles throughout my life, starting in high school in collegiate athletics, uh, medical device project management, um, and now owning a, a team of, of four people professionally. Um, I think something that'll help me, uh, be a good candidate if, if elected would be, through all those teams, the one consistent aspect that I felt has made them successful was being an active listener. And I think over the last few years, if we've learned anything, it's that debating and arguing can be divisive and, and you, you need to not only listen, but make sure the person feels listened to. Um, and I feel like I've had many years to develop that, and it could be very helpful, um, in these type of conversations that we'd be having amongst each other or with the community. Um, and then lastly, I, I just, one of the other inspiring things that. Um, and then lastly, I, I just, one of the other inspiring things that, that I came to a meeting that, that Nick presented on is the district report card and just progression and, and growth and consistent upward trend that the district has been on. Um, I, I would love to be a part of. I, I do have obviously vested interests with, with my kids growing and and coming in and I know we're, we're planning on being here for a few decades. Um, so kind of pitch. So appreciate you guys having me in and giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so I'm a graduate of SEC, I graduated nineteen ninety-eight. Got five kids in the district, two of them have graduated. I got a third grader, seventh grader and senior. Um, I've been involved in the school since we moved back here fifteen years ago. I've helped out quite a bit at the elementary school with the PPG and then later on at the high school with the senior all day party. Just like Lance, I was part of the referendum committee this past year and learned quite a bit and met a lot of a lot of great community members and it would just be my honor to serve on this board and make this school district feel a better future. All I got.
Please take your names out of those who don't know you.
I put my teeters on, I'm old. Uh, as many of you know, I'm Jeff Redman. Um, I'm again seeking uh, the opportunity, support of the St. Curry Central School Board. I joined the board originally in nineteen ninety-eight. Um, so one could easily ask, um, after twenty-four years, isn't that long enough? Um, I will tell you I've not lost my passion for public education. Um, I just am committed to making sure our kids have the very best educational opportunities that we can afford at SEC. I'm very um, honored to be a part of that. Like that's the, when Nick presented the um, latest s- school district report card, um, it literally made my eyeballs sweat. You know, Redmen's don't cry, but my eyeballs were sweating because I'm just so proud of all the work. I mean, this is a multi-year effort and many, many educators, it doesn't happen alone. And I'm just really proud of that. And it, you know, I've been part of the board that supported that effort. So I was very proud and I felt as if my contribution wasn't done yet, that I could still do more. For those of you that don't know me, Cindy and I have lived in the district for thirty-seven years. All three of our children are grown with kids. They all attended K through twelve here at St. Curry Central. Super prepared for college. They've all gone to graduate school and are very successful in their chosen careers. I feel as if the support they received here, the foundation at St. Curry Central is a large part of that. You know, I'm super proud of all my kids, but I'm particularly proud of my son, who chose to be a public school teacher. And I, having been involved here and involved in wage benefit committee things, that decision does not work out personal sacrifice. They're not gonna make as much as my daughter who's completed. So it's a sacrifice and so the people that choose that are passionate about our kids. And I'd like to continue to support those people that care so much about our kids. And I've driven the success that our district has received professionally. I'm a lawyer and a business coach. Student of how people learn. Um, I tell people that last year I read over two hundred books. I actually didn't read a single book. I listened on Audible at two point O's. I went through books really, really fast, but I, I just, it was love to learn and, and being on a school board has helped me um, learn so many things. Uh, as a community volunteer, on this board twenty-four years, very active in the Girl Scouts. I've really been committed to kids. I'm active in the Girl Scouts actually forty years. I spent six years on the national board of the Girl Scouts. I was on board of St. Curry Valley Y for ten years, chaired that board. And actually was one of the founding members of the center in New Richmond, when the Y left New Richmond. But their group of us started the center. So um, I just feel if you're a member of the community, you need to give back. I feel like I've tried to do that and would look forward to the support of the community to continue.
Thank you. Just like to say thank you to all three of you for stepping up and choosing to do this. It uh, it was hard for me to step away. And I hope that you guys continue to do great work because this is a great district. It deserves people who are willing to put forth the effort to make it even better.
Just so all three of you know, um, I'll kind of clip that video, the portion there and uh, put that on our Facebook page and get that out. As well, uh, share your questionnaire that you filled out with the Baldwin Bulletin and share that on social media as well. So we're gonna get uh, you know, your information and, and give you a chance to, to to know you and the form in which you're running. So that, that'll be pushed out here the next couple of weeks. So folks can make an informed decision on April fifth.
Next, we have our scheduled presentation by guests and staff members. We have our food service report. By food service director, Tim Simonson and Charwell's representative, Jerry Creer.
Hi, everybody. How are you? My name's Jerry Creer. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the district manager for Charwells. Um, this is Tammy Simonson. She is your longtime food service director, um, has run your program for many years. So um, I um, just wanted to talk to you a little bit tonight about um, what school food service looks like um, in the near future and what we're expecting to have, um, how kind of gonna expect to end up your year. Um, we are certainly um, feeding a lot of kids in your district right now. So um, compared to last year, um, we're, we're uh, from meal count um, pretty dramatically. About already about twenty-five thousand meals over what we served at this time last year. So um, with obviously, you know, last year we had pandemic issues and, and those kinds of things, but we really feel like the free meals are helping to um, relieve some of the food insecurities in our communities and um, you know, being able to give free breakfast and really, you know, be consistent about getting food in little kids' bellies is, is kind of our mission in life. And so being able to do that with free meals being provided to kids has been um, a wonderful thing for us. And um, so we're, we're really thrilled to be able to do that. Um, our gross sales are up about two hundred and ten thousand dollars this year over uh, same time last year. Um, and maybe, you know, I mean, my numbers are probably a little bit off from Jen's, but we're, we usually manage pretty closely. Um, so um, again, are the rates that were being paid, um, that you're being reimbursed from the, from the USDA are higher now for cold breakfast too much because of the pandemic funding. Um, so that's been, that's really been nice considering we're, you know, dealing with some challenges as far as supply chain and paying a little bit more for fruits and vegetables and some of our meat products and, and milk. Um, so being able to, to stay whole because of that and actually be profitable is, is really quite remarkable. So um, so that's been um, kind of fun to watch your uh, fund balance increase over this last year. And um, Tammy and Jen are, have been putting together some ideas on how we're gonna put that back into the program. Um, as far as buying some equipment for some of your locations and, and putting in some new steamers. Um, and making so investing back into the program, which is, as you probably already know, what we need to, we have to do. So um, that's great stuff. You know, it's, it's uh, keeping your facilities updated and everything, you know, moving forward and in good working condition um, is, is very important. So um, so with that being said, um, we um, are forecasted, um, I think probably to be a well, well over budget. On um, I, I can't really tell you yet what that number's gonna look like, but it, it's much higher than we predicted, even at the beginning of the year. So um, the kids are reacting well to what Tammy and her team are doing and they seem to really be loving the food. So um, we're very, very proud of the program and proud of our partnership here at St. Curry Central. And um, we're just really pleased to be your food service contractor. Um, I wanted to just tell you that right now, um, we don't think, well, um, the USDA is gonna fund free meals moving forward. Um, there's a lot of different schools of thoughts on this throughout kind of the, you know, the whole feeding kids movement. Um, I think the majority of us who do this for a living and really see in food insecurity in our kids over their lifetime. Um, change is maybe the way you would probably look at this. Um, because a lot of kids, you know, they, they really rely on this for the nutrition that they get. I mean, if they're getting food at home, it's usually not as nutritious as what we're giving them and, or they don't have access to fresh fruits and vegetables and those kinds of things. So um, they're gonna go back to what we saw pre-pandemic, which was um, the, you know, the, basically the um, not everybody eats free, right? You'd have to qualify for free or reduced and then the other kids would be paying. So um, again, you know, my, my opinion or our opinion um, at Charwells is that it's kind of unfortunate because we wanna see kids get fed, right? Um, so I'm sure there's lots of different ways people feel about that, but that tends to be how we feel. And um, so we don't know exactly what's coming this year. We don't, uh, there seems to be quite a bit of talk that um, they might go ahead. They've had a lot of pushback, as you probably can imagine. Um, so I don't know if it'll change or not. Um, we've had a lot of kind of last minute changes over the pandemic, right, where they weren't gonna fund it and then they do. And you know, there's been lots of kind of back and forth. So um, we don't know what's gonna happen. We're hopeful, but um, chances are we'll probably be going back to basically how we ran the program pre-pandemic. Um, so that's my little spiel for you tonight, unless you guys have any questions for us or um, any, any question, anything we can answer. Yeah, okay. Um, so I didn't know if this was kind of my place or not, but um, you know, Tammy has been really part of the fabric of the community here for twenty
Twenty years.
And she's gonna be retiring. And so um, we, you know, this is, we're obviously so, so happy for Tammy. Uh, but we're really sad for us, right? Because Tammy's a huge part of my team and the positivity on, on my team of the school districts that I manage in Wisconsin and Minnesota. So um, we're going through interviews, um, starting probably gonna start the process very soon. Um, what our plan of transition is going to be is we really wanna make sure that we identify somebody from the Charwells family who lives and worries kind of our um, you know, mission and has our standards. And the last thing that we wanna do is endanger this program in any way, shape or form. Tammy's, you know, put blood, sweat, tears into it and we really wanna keep it at that level. Um, we have identified some amazing talent. And um, so Tim and Jen and Tammy and I are gonna go, go through that process and it'll definitely very much be a um, you know, I've, you know, we'll do it as a committee. It's not my decision, you know, it's our decision. And so uh, again, in the spirit of partnership, so that's how we'll work through that. Um, whoever we identify will be at least half three months with Tammy. So um, that, that will be a great transition because again, you know, we really wanna make sure that that's strictly successful. So um, again, we're so happy for Tammy that she gets to retire with her husband. And oh, you know, we all know she loves to travel and to be out on her boat, do all those fun, those fun things, but I know we're all gonna miss her. So um, so that's, that's all I have. Is there anything else you wanted me to?
So I, I don't think you should be able to quit if I don't quit. You're about the same amount, man. But you know, um, the district has just turned over food service to your leadership and it's really, we just don't hear about it. And that means everything's going great. And just to see the quality of food service and the choices you've given kids and how responsive you are and when federal rules change and ketchup is a vegetable and then it isn't. And you know, you just, those are things that we couldn't do. Our district could not figure out and Charwells helps with that. But Tammy, you've really been um, a superstar.
She's one in a million. My husband's been waiting for me to retire for a while. He's been retired for a couple of years. So he's quite, he's older than I am. So we're gonna enjoy everything.
Be well.
Yeah.
Enjoy it.
It's always fun to come and see you guys once a year. I mean, you know, I appear more than once a year, but um, it's always fun. So thank you for having us and thank you for your partnership. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, next on the agenda is our financial reports. Budget report.
Alright, uh, our comp balances as of February twenty-eighth. Citizen State Bank checking is two million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and seven cents. The money market is three hundred and five thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-five cents. The money market fund forty-six is fifty-three dollars and nine cents. Suicide prevention, sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. And so the total balances is two million, nine hundred, forty-three thousand, six hundred, four dollars and sixty-two cents.
Any questions on the treasury report?
We'll move on to the second.
I have a motion, David, the second. Jeff, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the consideration of the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of approval of minutes from the February sixteenth meeting. Approval of five monthly bills for August, approval of letting arrangements, Heather Sweeney, One FTE High School Counselor, Emily Gunderson, eight-hour teaching and learning administrative assistant, Andy Wilburg, uh, One FTE Elementary School Play Mentor, Laurie Sather, eight-hour elementary school administrative assistant, Laura Thesen, seven-point-five-hour elementary sped para, Rebecca Hogg, eight-hour virtual academy student advisor, approval of appointments, contract modifications, Lance Evanson for four-hour ground custodian, John Quickso for uh, One FTE teen baseball coach, Michael Becker for a One FTE High School Virtual School Psychologist, Carissa Hamon, One FTE Elementary School Psychologist, and Rebecca Hogg for an eight-hour virtual academy registrar. What would you like to do with consent agenda?
Different. Your original and it's been updated a bit.
Okay, sorry. Alright, so I have to add a resignation and retirement of Derek Binkowski, One FTE ground supervisor. Jennifer Swenson, One FTE special education teacher. William Naraki, four-hour bus driver, Dustin Hayes, F time, One FTE varsity boys basketball coach. Um, Amy Olson as One FTE first grade teacher. And then adding in Lance Evanson as a two-hour bus driver. Michael Tom as a One FTE ground supervisor.
And then on the next page, approval of virtual notification request.
Approval of virtual modification request for student role, the full-time and part-time virtual courses. We have one part-time and five full-time.
Are you sure to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Second, I have a motion, David, second, Vince. Approval of consent agenda.
I.
Opposed? That carries. And we'll move on to administrative reports. We have student enrollment update.
Students in seats as of March twentieth, twenty-two count is one thousand, six hundred and five. Uh, for reference, we started with one thousand, six hundred and three in September. We typically drop, so we've stayed above that. Um, for the majority of the year are currently. Terms in the middle of, of the sheet, the matrix there, just for reference, our pre-introduced lunch rate stays pretty steady there at twenty-two point nine three percent. And bottom, bottom, uh, just to get
And bottom, bottom, just again, for open enrollment, it's important to point out, we have three hundred and sixty-eight students open enrolled in to our district. Again, three hundred and sixty-eight versus one hundred and twenty-two out for net positive, two hundred and forty-six students, uh, opening rolled in. Uh, then also in terms of our virtual school, um, full-time district residents, seventy-three. And then, uh, bottom right, you can see two hundred and forty-seven open enrolled in into our virtual school. As compared to two hundred and seventy-three last year, that was the largest last year, just, um, because of the pandemic such. But we continue to get in many, many, I, I'd say over ten at least this week, I've signed, it just continues. We, we typically have a low or a influx in August for, for school starts and then we have one again at semester time in January, but it just has not let up since the January ones, at least, and twelve a week, like we're signing, or I'm signing and approving, open enrollment in for the open enrollment reception application. So, that's a good thing. And again, those students are, are prorated on a daily rate, so we get credit the day they start in terms of funding. Any questions on the report?
At one point last year, we had trouble getting computers and sort of the support. We, I presume that's not an issue this year.
Correct. Next on our agenda is the key work of our school board. Uh, first part is student staff and community recognition.
We would like to recognize the Fusion hockey team. Uh, the SCC members are Kendra Fox, Ava Kessler, Peyton Clarence, Lauren Lindis, Elizabeth Myers, Jasmine Peterson, uh, Taya Peterson, Natalie Rosopoulous, Kendall Sunby and, uh, Adeline Swanson. Congratulations on your conference championship this hockey season. Congrats also to first-team all-conference member and co-big reverse player of the year, Kendall Sunby, and I will mention Jasmine Peterson. Also recognize HUGS, uh, hockey team SCC members, Ryan Bosnilers, 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 uh, Sawyer Ronklick, Ashton Peterson, Brendan Sanders, Rhett Schweitzer, Brian Worley, and Justin Woods. Congratulations on your conference championship. Uh, thank you to Tracy Crowley. Uh, Tracy, thank you for your work and organization hosting the FBLA regional event. Your work provided an awesome opportunity for not only our students, but also for the students from neighboring schools who attended. Thank you to John Hugh. Thank you for being the voice of the Panthers. Your dedication to our student athletes, fans, and SCC is very appreciated. Your voice, enthusiasm, and knowledge make for a fun, exciting, and professional game experience. You are appreciated. Thank you to Jean Johnson. You are a fixture at our athletic events. Your dedication at the scorer's table and love for our school, community, and student athletes is unmatched. You are appreciated. A thank you to Wendy Overston. Thank you for all, uh, your behind-the-scenes work with our athletic department and help in making our events run flawlessly. You are appreciated.
Moving on, our next item is discussion of future district needs and priorities. Regards to the referendum communication, the second, uh, eleven-by-seventeen mailer that's at the printers right now. To speak that back, you know, tomorrow or Friday, and mailboxes, two after that. Um, and then the last all-districts, uh, mailer, um, will be postcards, simple postcards to remind folks to get out the vote. So, that'll go out near the end, you know, spring break there. So, strategically, you know, three to five days right before April fifth. Um, and then we're going to hit it really hard, um, on Monday, Tuesday after spring break, April fourth and fifth, social media and all kinds of, just get out the vote. Um, secondly, the vote yes committee, um, you know, old architects, Ben Barry, had asked for a list of, of names to invite. Administration provided with fifty-six names. He emailed out an invite to meet at the Hazel Mac and Library last Thursday. Understand, obviously, the sectional semifinal boys basketball game, uh, definitely, uh, impacted the attendance, but, um, zero people showed up. Um, so, um, you know, the overall feeling though, there, there, you know, it was going to be a captain strategy anyway with ten people called ten people, you know, and, and not just, oh, get out the vote. You know, this strategy, it makes sense to me, you know, the, the yard signs and the more he puts stuff out, sometimes attracts the no votes and, and, you know, like sleeping dog, so to speak. So, uh, overall, you know, all of us, you can tell me if you'd heard it differently, but, you know, no news is good news. But with this referendum, there are no act of, you know, against it. A few comments, you know, on a Facebook post once that was quickly addressed and, you know, Stacy and her countless efforts to work, uh, that's a huge advantage. I think this time, I remember, um, she made the social media post, positive, proactive, clear communication. The website, I think, is outstanding. I mean, everything anybody could ever want is, is fair. But again, that's, um, kind of an opt-in thing. We're trying to do more push-out and be aware. But the main focus is just to get our, you know, parents, staff, if we can get them to the, to the polls and vote. You know, we're going to be in good shape, a thousand votes, a thousand yes votes predicted, you know, to, to be the magic number. Certainly can do that with just, you know, parents alone if they get out and vote. But, so yeah, that's the main thing right now is to just get people to the polls on April fifth for the referendum, the school board election. Again, it's, it's all looking very positive. I mean, we listened to the last time, the feedback and made those adjustments. Benefit of time and the benefit of, you know, the pandemic, so to speak, subsiding and the benefit of clear, 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 constant communication. Any questions or comments?
Very good traffic on the website, insights and, and the Facebook stuff.
Um, yeah, um, right now, just the whole page of the referendum is like in the fifth or sixth position as far as all of the pages of our school district. So, that's pretty high. There was a short period of time where one of the, like I think it was the needs page was also like kind of in the eighth or ninth position. So, you are getting some traffic there.
You know, the last thing is the community information meeting is next Monday, elementary school gym, six P M. Anything else? All right, then we move on to core agenda items. Uh, first item there is consideration of resolution for authorizing the partial adoption of the St. Croix Central School District. Nineteen million, forty-six thousand taxable convertible-to-tax accounts, general obligation, refunding bonds, dated January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty.
So, uh, so I just got a text back from Tom and he said that you can go ahead and sign for it. So, um, yeah, so if you remember back to October when we sent the levy, we levied additional amount to prepay debt. So, if you look at the Baird spreadsheet, that should be sitting at your place there. Um, down toward the bottom left side, you can see that for twenty-one, twenty-two, um, our fund thirty-nine levy was that five million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then you can see the breakdown of other principal and interest payments that we've had to make this year. And then, of course, our bond council fee for this prepayment as well. So, that left, uh, just over three point eight million dollars for the prepayment of debt. So, with that portion, we are paying off the item that's highlighted in blue, the two point three-three million item. And then the line above that, the two point two-nine-two is going to be partially repaid. So, are you not able to find that? You got it? So, after we make that prepayment, that one in the kind of peach color, that will be down to seven hundred and sixty-six thousand. So, overall, with this prepayment, we are going to save just over eight hundred thousand dollars in interest costs.
Select a consideration of a resolution. What would you like to do with that resolution? Second, I have a motion, Jeff, second, David, in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? And the next agenda item is consideration of approval of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three CISA shared service contract. You, you second.
Do you want to start or you want me to?
Um, sure, I'll start. I'll turn over you for the financial summary. Um, again, this is a reminder, this is annual contract with CISA for their shared services. Um, it's kind of a menu, as you can see, and, um, various things that we, um, have tracked with them for. Um, you can see the first three, uh, lines are non-negotiable. Maybe that's just their cost for administration, bidding, purchasing, delivery. After that, it's a menu of various things, so you can just see the, the various things that we take advantage of or don't need. Um, and then last year, we did, uh, I believe, five days of consulting. And again, the end of the meets goes through all these. We look at our usage reports, are folks using it. Um, so of note, uh, we have three days instead of five for next year. Um, we did, uh, uh, drop the healthy, safe, and respectful schools, because again, I think we had, um, eleven, um, combination of eleven between the folks and the number of times that they went. Um, and at fifty bucks a pop, we're going to come out ahead, doing it per person for the higher fee rather than the consortium fee of two thousand, four hundred and seventy, so this made financial sense, um, compared to our usage report. And the rest, we just renewed, we didn't drop anything else there. So, with that said, Jen can kind of give the summary of comparing this year to next year.
I do believe on the backside, the special ed council, I think we had two of these last year.
Oh, that's correct.
Yeah, and we did drop that as well. So, yeah, like Tim said, for the CISA administration, the cooperative bidding and the delivery service were required to take those. Um, the CISA administration was increased around two percent and the bidding was the same delivery service up about four percent. Um, if you go, keep going down, um, you can see that, uh, comprehensive consulting and networking services was up about four percent. But then we are saving money on some of these other things that we have either reduced or, or eliminated and are planning to pay on a per, per time basis. Um, some of these that have the star next to them, the audiology services and the vision impaired teacher, those are estimates for next year. It'll, of course, depend on how much we need their services. So, overall, I'm estimating a slight reduction in cost of just under five thousand dollars for this coming year. So, yeah. And obviously, the, the healthy, safe, and respectful schools will end up costing us a little bit, but not five thousand. So, that'll be good.
We have consideration of approval of that contract. What would you like to do? Look, except, motion, David. Second, Erica, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
You know, I'm the, our board's representative on their board of control, CISA, they really are very, Jerry does a nice job. They're very well run. He was a former superintendent, so he really understands how school districts, I think they really provide good stuff. A, a big, big part of their stuff is Head Start, which we don't take advantage of because it, you know, just aren't similar. But talk about issues, because they're directly federally funded, they have to wear masks and so, and be vaccinated. So, they've lost like thirty Head Start teachers that aren't going to, aren't willing to be managed, to, to be vaxxed. And there's literally hundreds of kids that no longer get Head Start services. I mean, it's just a travel speed. So, but it's the thing that the board spends, the board controls a lot of time on Head Start stuff. And so, it kind of runs itself. And they, it doesn't run itself. Jerry's team runs it well. Connie, is that her?
Connie Anderson.
Yeah, she's been there forever, before Jerry. I think she was, and keeps the wheels running. Uh, but they're talking about transition for her and Jerry. So, that's probably a couple of years out. So, they're changing their leadership team to have a assistant director that kind of helps build ours into a succession. Most of it for Connie's role. And then they had a Head Start. Only, you know, director had to retire because her father gets her to stay home. It's, it's just really good. I didn't know much about it. Because Howard was involved. If he was treasurer, they kind of looked at me, so I'm treasurer.
All right. Um, possible future agenda items. Anything for discussion under that item? Like once, going twice. All right. Uh, anything under other? Otherwise, we have important upcoming dates. March twenty-first is our community information session. Again, six P M. at the elementary school in the library. And April fifth is our spring election. April sixth is our joint-packed Board of Education evening with Randy Fox. April twentieth is our school board meeting, seven P M. You, any other dates that we need to announce?
I think we need to register if you want to cover it.
I'll go up to Randy's there. I mean, if you haven't seen Randy Fox, he's awesome. Tim's the one that recommended these speakers. But we have to pay and be good to people who don't.
Yes, Vince is already registered, I believe. Anyone else?
Okay, there's also the name for staff appreciation. I'm going to get one on my computer and just stop doing that. For staff appreciation breakfast, starting at seven fifteen A L. Thank you.
Tim, I thought you said earlier the community meeting was going to be in the gym, is that?
It is, that it's going to change, yeah, the book fair. Um, so we, we put most of the communication, I thought, but yeah. So, it is definitely going to be.
In the gym instead of the library.
Sure, thank you. Any other dates or corrections to the information that's there? Hearing none?
Second, but, but.
We're done.
It was over.
Yeah. I personally feel listening to those forensic speakers was worth staying here more.